Leave the room. But the rest of the public is welcome to stay. No hats, just. Who do we have?
Trustee Area Two.
Oh, trustee Area Two. Okay, do we, do we need trustee Area Number Six to?
No.
Okay. Starting with you, Debbie, every board member?
Yes, my name is Deborah Myers and I'm representative from Area Six or Seven. Oh, it's Area Seven in the Pequon, Wichita area.
My name is Kerry Waddy and I represent Area One, which is Salier. Salier area.
And I'm Martha McLaughlin. I represent Area Three, which is the Orleans over through the wilderness and down into.
Hi, and I'm Marley George. I am currently representing a portion of Area Six, was the old area. Year four, but there will be two candidates. Our, my district was broken up and there'll be two candidates, so trustees in my place.
Okay, each candidate will be interviewed in order of trustee Area Number, starting with trustee Area Two and then trustee Area Six. So trustee Area Two will be interviewed first. You want to sit in line? Okay.
Then has questions.
Every single.
That would be good. Does everybody have a shirt?
No.
And why don't we just start? Yeah, let's just start.
So question number one says. Why are you interested in being a board member for Plum Trinity? And is this okay? Does anybody need to hear me right there? You didn't bring me a mic.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm interested in being on the school board because, you know, I've had an adult daughter that's already been through the school system and my son is a sophomore at Hoover Island now. So I'm always interested in what's going on with the education and I've really actually been very curious about how the school board works and, you know, I'm, I'm very a parenting, community oriented and I think there could be better ways to communicate with families and parents possibly and I don't know, I just wanted to check it out and see if there's anything that I can help with or have ideas that maybe haven't been actually implemented yet or something, you know, and you never know, you can't just sit back and complain about things unless you're willing to throw your hat and give it a shot yourself.
Okay. Are you familiar with school district budgets, especially pertaining to the local control accountability plan?
Well, I find that the school budget is kind of difficult to actually get your hands on or to even be able to see, so I've worked a lot with on the LCAP and I was site, on-site counselor at Trinity Valley Elementary for several years back when my daughter was in school there and, and so I, I'm familiar vaguely with, with the budget, but also that, you know, you really can't get those numbers for the budget and I know we've tried to do that and, but you know, we just work, you work with what you have and that's just kind of how it goes from my experience.
Describe your experience delivering education. I don't like. These are not my regular glasses. There is much discussion surrounding trauma-informed care. What is your knowledge of and philosophy on trauma-informed care?
Well, I think trauma-informed care is, you know, you have to be aware of the trauma that your students have gone through and are continuing to go through. I think that the, it's very important to get the training to as many teachers and staff as possible so that they are knowledgeable of trauma-informed care for our particular student. And in, and I, I just, you know, I don't know how to describe it any better than that. It's different for different children, different families, but it's got to be acknowledged by the staff and by all the teachers. And I think that's one of the, is a very important step is to get that training.
Describe your experience delivering education to Plum Trinity Unified School District children living within this district.
Delivering education, I have, well, I, I have two children that I helped through school with their classes, with their classes and I've been in schools, in this classroom with my, with my son, most more than with my daughter. I've sat on-site council for many, for eight years back when my daughter was in school. I, I don't, I haven't been a, like, a teacher's aide or anything like that, but just through normal family, helping with homework and making sure the school were getting that. Debbie, new question.
What do you know about the disclosure of confidential information from closed sessions? Because you don't do it. Confidential means confidential and that's it.
Are you willing to attend training on how to be an effective board member on a Saturday and why do you think this training is important?
Well, of course I would be willing to do training on a Saturday and I think it's, I think it's always important to train to be able to take some training if you're entering a new board or a new position or anything new, to be open to the training for that position.
What personal attributes do you have that will help the board select you as the provisional appointee to represent your trustee area?
Well, I, I like to think I'm a problem solver. I, I think I'm practical and honest and I will, I, I tell the truth and I, I say it, I, I see it. No sugar coating, but not rude. I, I, you know, I'm outgoing that way and I, I think that I can, I think that I can voice my opinions in a good way and, and I'm, it's, and make people understand how I'm, what I'm thinking.
What do you think you can do to accomplish the vision, mission, and goals of the district?
Well, that I don't know yet because I haven't sat up there before and I'm sure it's a tough job and I'm not sure exactly what, what your visions you might already be working on are. I, I think that I would come in with an open mind and really be that parent advocate and try to bridge the gap between families and the school board. And then when I realize what your vision already is and see how I can work within one. What do you think you can do or do very?
Yeah.
There are times when special board meetings need to be held. Often they're held during the day. Does your schedule allow you to attend special meetings as needed?
Yes.
Here's a scenario. An attendee at the board meeting is yelling, insulting board members, refusing to give up the book, refusing to give up the floor. How should this scenario be handled?
Well, I would, I think you ask them kindly to stop. And if they don't want, don't stop. And they are being overly belligerent and then I think we all get up and leave. Adgerminating. After a couple of turns of course.
Are you familiar with the education codes and can you describe how the education codes drive school board governance?
No, I, I don't know all the education codes. I just know that, you know, that, that you are strictly held to those codes as a school board and, and that, you know, everyone in the school districts in the administration and they're all have, I know that they're strict and they have to be followed.
Okay, describe your commitment to delivering culturally appropriate and historically accurate education.
Oh, I think that's, that's what we all need to do, right? That's what we thrive, strive for, I think, is to be able to do that and that's the, that's the main goal. Is there anything you would like to add or tell us about yourself? No, I think I've been around quite a lot, actually. So I think you pretty much at least have seen me or heard me speak before and I've always been interested in Indian education and the ABC and I've worked on the LCAP and the site council. So I just, this is just like the next step that I would really like to try and see how I could do, if I could be upheld. I would hope I could be and I'd like to experience that. I think it would be great working with you, that's all. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you so much.
My first question is, why are you interested in being on the board for Plum Trinity Unified School District?
I do, I'm from education and training. Into it. I used to run Johnson and Mall in K-12. So we did a lot of things in schools under which are still going. Two and C officer, family tracking. Things to be called Ace of Science here, those were things that I implemented through those grants. It's not called Ace of Science, but it's just a science grant, but those are things that we, it's a huge grant. It's always very involved in education.
Are you familiar with school, are you familiar with school district budgets, especially pertaining to the local control accountability plan?
No, I am not familiar with school district budgets or the local control accountability.
There is much discussion surrounding trauma-informed care. What is your knowledge and philosophy on trauma-informed care?
I'm not all that familiar with trauma-informed care. I did see a flyer on it once. I've never seen it in front of the screen on it before.
Describe your experience delivering education to Plum Trinity Unified School District children living within this district.
Like I said, I worked for Johnson and Mall before, so a lot of things that I did through that, through that program, tutoring, whether it was remedial home or you're gifted to, you know, the first Title IV RB grant in California and that's where we talented and gifted, which is where the science fair came from. So I'm fairly familiar with education. I worked closely with the owner. He wanted me to be vice principal, but.
So what do you know about the disclosure of confidential information from closed session?
I understand how that works very well. Are you willing to attend training on how to be an effective board member on a Saturday and why do you think this training is important?
Yeah, I'm willing to work on a Saturday. And why would I think this is important? Because I'll be going to share things that I probably don't know where, as being a board member.
What personal attributes do you have that will help the board select you as a provisional appointee to represent your trustee area?
Personal attributes, I'm a hard worker and I'm good at this and I'm a doer.
What do you think you can do to accomplish the vision, mission, and goals of the district?
What are the vision and mission goals?
Vision, mission, and goals of the district.
I know, when are they laid out?
So if you knew that what they were, what do you think you could do? To help accomplish.
I'm sure we have no problem. I work with missions and goal statements for entire unit bringing grants.
There are, there are special times when special board meetings need to be held. Often they are held during the day. Does your schedule allow you to attend special meetings as needed?
Yeah.
Okay, this is a scenario. An attendee at the board meeting is yelling, insulting board members, refusing to give up the board floor. How should this scenario be handled?
I think my best, obviously, you do your best to try and do this. If you have a sergeant in person, you can use a license.
Are you familiar with education codes? Can you describe how the education codes drive school board governance?
Describe your commitment to delivering culturally appropriate and historically accurate education.
Is there anything else that you would like to add to this or tell us about yourself or any questions for us?
I just come from a long line of being involved in education. So I've, I've been around that as an example to me. So it's partly embrace this position.
No, no, you guys can be in there.
Oh, no, I lied. They're going to discuss you.
So do we have any discussions?
I think we got two very qualified candidates before us and each will represent their district with integrity. I know one thing that Leslie didn't say was that she comes from a long line of school board members. Her grandfather, I believe, was on the board for forty-some years. Her mother was on the board for how long?
A long time.
And that's, that's a long legacy. And I think that Les would fulfill the position and the same commitment and honesty. And I remember one of the things that Maggie told me, that's Leslie's mom, is that her father told her, you always follow the board policies and you can't go wrong. And that has helped me in my years. Thank you, Maggie.
Yeah, my thoughts, my thoughts also were that we have two very good applicants and I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure that both ladies would do a good job on this board. And that comes, then they come to it with the integrity and the willingness to.
I agree with that too. I agree with everything that Laura said. And I think we have two very strong candidates here and I'm very excited that, that we had people come forward that are such wonderful people.
I'm going to call for the vote.
No.
Audience. Oh, do you have any comments from the audience?
Good job. Okay. The only comment I have is both of the candidates were wondering how these positions were advertised. They just both made comments.
So she was wondering how the candidates were, became aware of the position, how, what, how was it advertised?
I just wanted to let the board know that there's, you know, a communication issue going on between what goes on here. Did it, I think it was in the newspaper? Yeah. It was in the paper. On Facebook, web. I was just letting the board know what I had been listening to.
Okay. I'm sorry, I have such a hard time hearing your face mask. Is it, maybe it, is it my hearing? Did you guys do? That's horrible. Okay. Yeah, let's bring them back in.
Your first two. For December board leader, isn't that the first Tuesday because of some?
We asked Kerry to, to give us what it would mean to do.
Oh, it is.
Just the Area Two, candidate Lori Hodge. Trustee Waddy. Aye, may.
Oh. Aye.
Trustee Wild is absent. Trustee Gorman is absent. Trustee Corbrow is absent. Trustee George.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
Ee.
And trustee McLaughlin is an aye. So we have four ayes. Three absents. Congratulations to our.
Thank you.
And trustee Area Six. Leslie and Leslie, I'm sorry, I want to call you Leslie Sayes, but I know it hasn't been that long. Trustee Waddy.
Aye.
Trustee Wild is absent. Trustee Gorman is absent. Trustee Corbrow is absent. Trustee George.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
Ee.
And trustee McLaughlin, aye. And trustee McLaughlin, I. So we have. Four I's. Absent and unanimous, that's.
Thank you.
I'm not reading instructions. The appointees to each trustee area. Will be seated at the Board of Trustees' organizational meeting on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two at six o'clock. And I'm assuming that they will get board packets. Okay, action item six B. Through all the overdue injunctions for tiny I, do we have any discussion on that?
I make a motion to approve that. Maybe there's more, maybe there's discussion, but it's way overdue.
Yes.
I don't understand what happened. We just got slipped in the cracks or something.
Personality.
Personally.
Okay. Okay. All in favor?
I.
I.
E.
Opposed? None? Two questions?
I have a question. Have we caught up on all the other years?
Yes, to best of our knowledge.
Yes, to our knowledge, yes.
Okay, and number seven, reports and information items, the CDA.
Okay, so seven A. Seven A and seven B go together because we have one teacher at Jack Norton Elementary School who got COVID. And there were no subs available, so the principal Jason. Was unable to do it himself. So we closed the school for a week. That was back in October. And so when you do close a school for a week and put everyone on independent study. You have to present a plan to the State Department about how the students would be getting their education. So. Seven A is just a spreadsheet showing that what day the independent study would start, what day the. Independent study would end. That was one week.
Okay.
So by approving seven, they go together. And so the seven B is the actual closure due to. No substitutes available, which is a problem in our district.
This is an action notice. It's not an action.
Notice about that depending on board members. I did not see the notice before it happened. I only saw it when it came out here, but I did not get a notice saying that they were closing the school for that week.
Well, the school actually remained open. It was. They just didn't have a teacher. The education was going to be independent state packets. So we kept the school open as far as the secretary and the principal getting there and to pass out the packets to families and to receive them.
Okay.
The campus.
Okay, I.
For the students.
For the students, right.
We do need to approve this before it goes to the state.
Correct.
So it's supposed to be an action item, which it is not. So I. Move that we move seven A and B up to six. To be action item.
Second?
I second that.
All in favor of moving items seven A and seven B? Up to action items? All in favor of doing that? I.
Me.
opposed?
Now I move that we approve. The certification form for independent study. Be sent to the state.
Yes, I second that.
All in favor?
No.
And opposed? Or you men, that motion passes?
Before you leave that topic, I have a question. Jennifer. Obviously exhausted every effort to get a teacher to that site. Now, now lies upon your administration. Do you not have an administrator known as Special Projects?
Correct, we do.
Is that a possibility that that administrator should have flown to that place and acted as a teacher at that site?
That would have been helpful, but that administrator was also sick same time, and so I was not able to use him. He was definitely on my list.
Question, answer.
Okay, NCIDC and ACLU. Yeah, presenting Education and Justice Summit. Any discussion on that? Any questions?
I just want the audience to know that coming up on November fourth, which is what, three more days from now? That the HCOE in. Collaboration with the NCIDC and the ACLU are presenting an indigenous education and justice summit from eleven AM till four PM. And inside of the packet is the registration link, and I know there were some board members interested in attending that, and it's also great information for. Parents and community members if they would also like to go. I realize that's during school time, so subs will be limited. However, it's, it's open. It's open for the public.
It's in person, Jen?
Pardon?
It's in person.
Uh, let's see. It, it doesn't have a Zoom or anything on here, so it says lunch will be provided, so I'm assuming it just has a registration link. So just get a copy of that. Yes, sir. You have a comment?
I just had a quick comment. Is it possible to make sure that that flyer is sent to? The three tribes in the area and the. The emails of the parents that maybe didn't know about it before. I'd really appreciate that.
Sure. Sure, absolutely.
I know hard copy is not possible, but email would be fine.
Absolutely, we will send it out to the three tribes and to any other community people that would like to know. It's in the Hummer County Office of Education at the, yeah, in Eureka. It's out there. Like around going to the hospital, like that way.
Yeah.
Murdaugh Avenue.
Murdaugh Avenue, yes.
It's too bad it couldn't be on nighttime again. For a Saturday, yeah. IPP meeting notification.
That's information also. I'd like to say that Erica, Tracy, our new education director for the climate Trinity. Joint Unified School District will have her first IPP meeting. Tomorrow, Wednesday, November second, five thirty to seven thirty. Zoom option is available for that. And so she wanted the community to be aware and that she is back.
Is that, that's here?
That'll, that'll be over in her office. Oh, no, it's here. Sorry. She didn't say she wanted. So we're gonna have like all kinds of meetings tomorrow.
I, I have one comment that I will make. As you know, I'll be setting amongst you very soon. And months ago, Jennifer will be my, my witness, I ask for hopefully an aggressive search. For on behalf of Room Nine and its seventeen, eighteen students to take over four, three teaching position there. To my knowledge, when I checked out last week, it's just open and filled. Folks, I, I'm, I'm telling you, you're gonna have. Eighteen sets of parents up here not very happy with us if we don't move aggressively to try to get somebody there. I don't know who it's gonna be, and I'm sorry, I'll automatic one for you. I have been contacting all my. Connections on the coast that I'm with. I've been part of the history for many, many years. And I beat the brush as best I can to get somebody qualified to come up here and be here. Obviously, there are. Poor stories of our district. It's hard to get some people here. They will not come. They've heard enough in their minds that we're, we're, we're a little unsettled at Hoopa Elementary School. And all I can say is that. I tremor for my kids. And I'm caught in the crossfire to leave them in twenty plus days. And I want you to be aware of it as board people. I ask you, I beg you. To be very, very convincing to the personnel department to go find someone for. Fourth grade at Hoopa Elementary School. As you know, Wes Crawford also stepped down from the elementary school and he's positioned it's now avoid open. And I haven't really heard much on my side to fill it or even deal with it. So I felt that, you know, as we fought for what we call cultural connections on that site, it's just been abandoned, completely abandoned. And, and that is concerning. To any site. But to this district, clearly. So hopefully, if you're aware of it, if you're not aware of it, you're aware of it now. And I think you'll be aware of more things in the coming forty-eight hours. As Hoopa Elementary School will gather again for a second camp meeting. As we get together with our trustees in Hoopa and talk about the status and concerns of Hoopa Elementary School. And you'll be listening to trustee Coe Grove, trustee George in the coming hours about that. Just kind of getting, making you aware. Ms. Lane, I definitely encourage you to attend that meeting if you have the ability tomorrow at around three fifteen. To listen to the concerns and address. The successes and. Issues that we have at that site.
I just want to clarify that the cultural connections position was given to Curtis Kane. By the administrator at the site and taken away from Mr. Crawford prior to his departure, so the position is still there. So if we're gonna advertise, then I believe that it would be a PE teacher that we're looking for in that regard.
It'll be interesting what our conversations will lead to on that site meeting tomorrow. How this, how, how that's being addressed, how that, how that. Service is being offered to our clients, the students of Hoopa Elementary School. We'll wait for a few hours to see how that reaction is. From my colleagues.
I want you to be, to know that I've made the board fully aware of everything that's been happening.
Excellent.
Many of our closed sessions are dealing with issues.
Excellent.
At that site.
Excellent. And now it's results that we're shooting for.
I also would like to invite the newly incoming. Hoopa trustee Leslie and you'll already be there, Paige. And Lori, well, no, Lori's Trinity Valley. This is the Hoopa trustees meeting with the Hoopa Valley. Elementary staff.
Also, everyone.
Well, we can't all go anywhere. Not a forum.
You're only allowed to have two. But I mean, if you're on.
They can have three.
Four is a forum. Four is a forum.
We're not sworn in yet, so we don't count.
Right. But I would like to. Less and so that you can kind of hear some of the things that are going on at Hoopa. I also, Paige, was, you used the word aggressively. Trying to get a teacher for the fourth grade. And if you find aggressively more.
You need to find somebody to fill that spot because at this point you are, you understand.
I understand the need, I understand. What can we do that we've not done already?
Yeah, we, we haven't, we haven't gone after trying to even get applicants. At this time, you posted it. It hasn't been responded. So the response I got from the personnel department was it's open and filled. We're aware of it. Nobody's applying. We have, well, it's open, filled. To me, that doesn't seem like you're going after anybody. To me, it's like you walk through the basics, the basics to fly the position. Nobody's responded, very much like your board members in section six and two. And, and now you're not beating the brush to try to go after it, get next level to go recruit. It's open and filled. If you think people are gonna just look at a piece of paper or look at your website and come running at you. They have it. They have it for, I don't know how many positions at Hoopa Elementary School alone. We have open and filled on the docket for how many positions. I couldn't even answer it, and I worked there, but I know there are multiple. Over ten positions that aren't even filled there. So. You've shown that, that, that if you post it. And then nobody comes, you just, it, it sends the vibe that you really don't care that these positions are filled there on. That's the only interpretation I can relate to, being a, a staff member there. Again, I'm trying to, trying to help you here because I know darn well that my parents are aware of it, and I know darn well I've been getting questions of who's coming in. Even my nine-year-old kids are asking who's coming in.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking.
Let's go after it a little bit more. Let's, let's, let's try to reach out to your, your ITAP department. Let's try to reach out to.
The, the. I would just, you've, you've been aggressive in what you're doing.
I'm, I'm passionate about what I do.
Yeah. And nationwide, this is an issue. And it doesn't, we can still go out and try to get whoever we can.
And I, I've been, as a, as a board member, I've been going to people's houses that I know. That have the, they don't have teacher credential yet, but they could get it. And I've been knocking on the door saying, hey, we, we need you guys. Can you come back? Can you come back? And every time it's like, no, I have things to do. I just had a baby or just that, you know, there's all this stuff going on and they're like. They won't, you know, they won't budge.
I recognize that the nation is in turmoil. I recognize that California dropping like flies in this depression for a lot of reasons. But that's never a good enough excuse.
Because we're also.
It's never an excuse for my kids that I look at.
Sign-on bonuses.
I will not take that excuse for the eighteen kids that I look at every day. I have, I'm not logging them in in national or California. They're our kids. We gotta go after them.
I had two quick comments. Thank you, Paige, for those words, and thank you, Ms. Councilperson Deborah, for your words. That was the first comment I wanted to make. I want to recognize on the. On the, the realization that Deborah does say E or PA. She uses the Euro language, which is a local language. And so I really appreciate that. Second, I really want to mention that Jack Norton, since January eleventh, has not had a kindergarten through third grade teacher. So what Paige is speaking to, to the Hoopa elementary site. Please recognize the, the need, the importance and the, the. Just the pertinent. Ability to make sure somebody gets down there ASAP because January eleventh of two thousand twenty-two. They have not had a kindergarten through third grade teacher.
Any other comments?
Yes, I want to make a motion to adjourn.
We'll set it. E.